Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, January 27th, 2020. We'll start off with the acceptance of the minutes of the meeting for January 13th, 2020.
Most people.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then on to communications. I see nothing under that, and we'll head over to Dr. Kron for superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a few brief things. In going through the department head reports for the month, I just, I wanted to point out that we just have an amazing art department in our school district. From kindergarten through high school, they're doing amazing things in art. And each year, we seem to have students graduating who are going on to careers in art. And I just want to, want to give kudos to, to Mrs. Thompson and the art department and all the teachers that came before her, because this department's been great for decades. And I think it's just a department that doesn't get a lot of attention a lot of the time, but they're, they're awesome. So thank you. And we're looking forward to the Arts Festival this year. I'd also like to thank Tim Wells and Chris Howe, who are our two technology technicians. And Mr. Wells is the head of our technology department. Want to thank them for helping all those teachers who received RAF grants this year, helping out with that rollout, and for dealing with all of our technology needs throughout the year. So far this year, there have been 845 trouble tickets filed with Mr. Wells and Mr. Howe, and they have successfully resolved 839 of them.
Wow.
So they're, they're very busy gentlemen, but they do a great job keeping us all online and keeping all of our many, our many devices in order. And then finally, just a quick shout out to Rockland Daycare. They continue to flourish under the direction of Janet Tate and Marissa Baldassari. Currently, there are 97 families enrolled in daycare and over 200 enrolled in our after-school and before-school programs. So they're doing an outstanding job, and we appreciate them very much. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. On to our audience. We have Janine Murphy from the Rogers Middle School Special Education Teacher. Ms. Bond?
You want to come? You're gonna come too? Oh, Linda?
Oh, Ms. Menigley.
I'd like to come.
Yes, let's all come. Let's all come. If we make a mistake, Mr. Murphy will just edit it out, so don't worry.
Is this live?
No. No. This is a 10-second delay.
Thanks for, thanks for having us here. Ms., Dr. Menigley and I just wanted to take a moment to speak to you just a little bit about, we talk a lot about the MCAS, and we don't often talk about the MCAS alternate, which is a very big assessment for our special education students, especially our kids who are in self-contained programs. The amount of work and rigor that is required to put together those portfolios is something you can't even imagine. I was a special ed coordinator years ago, and I can remember even back then, and it's become even more complicated. And Janine Murphy, who is now a second-year teacher at the Rogers Middle School who runs our life skills program, was just recently recognized at a conference that was held in?
Taunton.
Taunton, Massachusetts. Her exemplar was used. Her portfolio was used to show everybody else, all those other people that were there at the presentation, what needs to be done, how it should be done, what is the expectation. That's not easy to do, and that's not easy to represent. I think we shared a example with you, just so you could get an example to see exactly what the work is, but I could not be more proud of Janine for the work she's done both in the classroom and representing Rockland at the MCAS halt. So a very quick shout out, and thank you to Janine Murphy for her hard work.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you, and congratulations, Mrs. Murphy. We're going to go on to next Rogers Middle School student McKenna Marr for the 351 project. Back at it, Ms. Bond?
I'm gonna bring up another really cool person. For those of you who have been here with us before, the Project 351 happens in January. It's a community service program where the kids go into Boston for a day of service, and we were lucky to send McKenna this year. And let me just tell you a little bit about her. She has been a straight A student since fifth grade. She's an active member of our chorus and the secretary of our student government, and those are three pretty cool things to be a part of.
Right.
She's a fantastic representative for not only our school, but our town, and I wanted to just bring her forward to say congratulations and thank you for all your hard work.
And I have a gift for you. But before that, could I just ask you, could you tell us anything special about the, the day that you spent?
So we went to Fannie Hall in the morning, and it was extremely exciting because I got to talk to so many very important people that made everybody so happy and made them so energetic for the day coming forward. And then I got to travel to UMass, actually, and I got to package soup for the people in need and package materials for them that they would need.
Busy day.
Yeah.
Busy day. Well, we're very, very proud of you. And on behalf of the Rockland Public Schools, I'd like to present you with a certificate for participating in the Community Service Project 351 on this 27th day of January 2020. Congratulations.
Cheers.
Want to take a picture? So anyone have a camera? Here, we'll do it real quick. Oh, there we go. There she is.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, McKenna. Okay, on to our financial reports for November and December. We have the school department, the high school students' activities, the middle school student activities, the cafeteria, and the daycare.
Is it 10 motions?
It's 10, because it's December and November. You're right.
10 seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye times 10.
And then we'll move into monthly reports for November and December. We have art, athletic, computer technology, daycare, deans, English 5 through 8, English 9 through 12, family, consumer science, technology, health, physical education, math 5 through 8, math 9 through 12, music, radio, TV station, science, social studies, special education 9 through 12, middle school, foreign language, and the library. So it would be 19 motions for that.
13 motions.
13 seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to go on to curriculum corner with Memorial Park, Grade 4, Fost Science. Mrs. Sheen?
Hello, and thank you for having us tonight. Last year, we shared our implementation of our kindness theme that we were doing for the year, and we've continued it this year. So I just wanted to let you know that we placed a little gift for each of you. Oh, you're already wearing them. Good for you. The bracelets and your Random Act of Kindness cards. Last week, our student leaders in Grade 4 went, well, they were invited after writing a letter to the Board of Selectmen. They were invited to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and they approved the first-ever Kindness Day for Rockland. So that will be on February 14th, and we have a whole marketing campaign going on, and the kids are coming to record a song tomorrow here in the studio. So very exciting news with all of that going on. And then we have some other kids. One of them's one of our leaders as well on our kindness, but two other leaders in science have been chosen by their teachers to share tonight with the help of the STEAM coach and their teachers. So I want to introduce their teachers to you. So Bas Quatrio, Carrie Blake, Kristen Latif. And they will introduce the students and what they will be doing.
So you three can come on up. This is Hannah Corbett, Patrick McDonough, and Braden Mills. And I'm just gonna introduce what they're gonna do, and then they're gonna take over. So we have a new science program. We've been working for a couple of years on it, very hands-on. The kids really love the part where they just get equipment like that sitting out on the table. They get, we just ask them to try to do something, and they get to just hands-on experiment, see if they can figure it out on their own. It's been pretty successful. We're still learning as we go through those. Sometimes they know more than we do. So the students have recently started a unit to investigate the current, the phenomena of current electricity. Throughout this unit, they will design circuits using the DCs, wires, light bulbs, switches, and motors in different configurations to transfer the energy. This program allows them lots of hands-on experience. And that's just a picture of a very small amount of the things that come within the kit. All right, you ready, guys?
We...
Can you talk really loud? Do you want to come over here?
We hope you like what we show you tonight. Science is fun, and we enjoy trying things out and then being able to answer focus questions that we are given.
We have worked with two focus questions so far in this unit. They are, what is needed to light a light bulb, and what materials transfer electricity?
With each unit, we learn lots of science vocabulary that we use in class discussions. A few that go with this unit are, one, closed circuit. This is when the circuit is closed, like a circle to allow the electric current to flow and energy to transfer.
Open circuit. This is when the switch is open, preventing the electric current from completing the circle. When the circuit is open, it breaks the flow of energy.
Conductor. This is an object like a steel nail or paper clip. These objects can make a closed circuit and lets the electric current flow.
For insulators. This is an object like a plastic straw or a wooden stick, which does not close a circuit. These objects do not let the current flow. We tested 20 different items and ident, identified them as conductors or insulators.
Each class is a different part of the investigation. The next thing we will be studying is, how can we light two bulbs brightly with one DC? We will be building a series circuit. We will be learning the importance of the orientation of our DC. The difference in their position will either, either light the bulb or not.
A series circuit is when two bulbs are connected in one big circuit so that the electric current goes through all the components, one after the other.
We would like to invite the members of the school committee up to the table. We will supply you with one DC, two wires, and a light bulb. Can you, can you light the bulb?
I'm so glad it's not a math problem.
I read that on the agenda too, Mr. Graff. I was like, okay, science, I can do that.
Am I gonna get a shock?
You can. Can we just say it's a good thing that your father has finished your bedrooms? Otherwise, you two would be like, probably lighting your house on fire with playing with this electricity.
So you've done this, eh?
Uh-oh.
You guys are wrong already. We haven't even started.
Okay.
I'm gonna go in the middle. Us girls will stick together.
What can I do? I can have that one there.
Do you want to come around, Ms. Mills?
If you want me to build something, I'd be much better off.
Is it just this?
I know.
You can certainly help me, my love. One on the other one.
You got that?
Are you gonna get shocked? It's not shock, it's the shires.
Just a DC. Shouldn't shock anybody. It's not like a nine volt.
Hold it like this.
Deck, Ms. Phelps.
So I want to put one here.
Oh, we did it.
The middle is touching me.
Yeah.
You got that?
There we go. On the middle or on the button?
Can you feel like history or something here?
Nice job. Impressive.
It's those sausage fingers you've got.
Oh my, it's insane, right?
One on the middle.
Believe me, I'm working it. I just have fat hands.
I already did it. I already...
Yes, because your hands are smaller than mine.
You light up my life.
Look at the light bulb in my hand. Like holding a tooth.
And then you go like this.
There you go. We did it.
Yeah.
Science, not made for fat hand guys.
You get the message?
Did you do it? Did we get a picture of you two working together?
Are you doing Morse code?
Hold on.
You know what that said? SOS, help me, please.
Okay. Yeah.
All right.
So you like doing this stuff?
Good job.
All right. Good job, guys.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms.
I'm much better at demo.
I'd like to show you the circuit boards that we made and tested all the material to determine if they were conductors or insulators.
You can carry them and show them. Should we run away from them when they're not done?
No, but they'll come to you. Yes, you can just be a couple to show them.
I only left because you did.
I thought they were done.
Put it right here.
Come here.
Okay. Uh-oh.
Patrick doesn't want to come over.
All right.
You come in here, or you go into the ladies over there? Thank you.
Conductors, insulators.
I know. It's a guy.
Ooh, that works.
You had big hands. They gave up.
Ooh, look at that. That thing's going, huh?
Oh, look at this. A new ring.
That works.
Now, if I put it here and here, will my thing go?
So they either work or don't work? It isn't like one is stronger than another?
He's gonna show you.
Try the straw. Let's try the straw.
See, this is an open circuit. We're gonna try to make it.
That doesn't work.
Okay, you're good.
That doesn't do anything.
Me or you?
Let's try the tinfoil.
I think he's gonna do it with you.
When you're done, you want to come change some switches? That might help.
Put it down.
This down.
What do we run then? We ran some.
I don't know which one ran.
I don't remember 4th grade science, but I'm pretty sure.
So this makes it work. All right.
Oh, it's copper work.
Oh, to see. I get what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And now trying.
There's no better science teacher in elementary middle school.
Right. Nothing works.
Because it's rubber, right?
Okay.
The copper.
Okay, yeah. So you did that.
No, because it's copper.
Let's do it the other way. Copper work. We did it this way here.
Don't light up though.
Look at that.
There you go.
We have an extra.
Right here.
Stealing this.
Okay, you can have that. You can steal. Is that right? Okay, now let's try this.
She had no interest in the nail. Okay.
Nothing.
Nothing.
That's an insulator. Is this an insulator?
Can you guys see?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Very cool.
And how many things did you test? You tested a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah, try this.
All right, guys.
I know. It's an insulator. Paper's an insulator.
Okay, so Patrick's gonna read something for us.
Okay.
Memorial Park would like to thank you all for having us here to show you some of the exciting work that is going on in fourth grade. Thank you for supporting us, both students and managers.
All right.
Thank you.
Good job. Really good job.
Can we give that a kiss?
Well done.
He's like, no.
I know. Yeah.
Won't we put these all back in here?
No. Okay, you're gonna take them all here.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
Do you want all this stuff? Leave my, leave my...
Leave him the cough drop.
Yeah, he needs those. Those are not a conductor or insulator. Yeah, take that one too.
Thank you, guys. Good job.
All right, thank you. Good job.
Great job, guys.
Good job.
All right.
All right. I don't want to stay. I'm gonna present the budget.
If he's staying for that, don't worry.
It's fascinating.
Isabel's staying for that. She'll be here.
And thank you for parents for bringing everyone up to us.
Thank you.
Teachers and parents.
Thank you, parents.
Teachers, parents, grandparents.
Thank you.
Uncles, aunts.
I don't, I don't recall 4th grade science, because it was like 27 years ago, but I don't think it was ever that.
Was that not that fun?
Hey, listen. Right now, I'm the youngest here, because Emily's not here.
He's gonna hold it all night. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah for president.
All right, now that they're sort of quiet out, I'm gonna keep moving. Onto old business with fundraisers completed. Rogers Middle School 8th grade Philly trip, the Hilliards chocolate bars raised $5,200. The middle school pack selling Bulldog apparel raised $435. The Esten Pack movie night raised $152.81. The class of 2023 did a gift card raffle for $543. And the class of 2023 did chocolate-covered pretzels, but they didn't do it, actually. It got canceled. So congratulations to all of you. That was a lot of money earned.
I actually went to a middle school pack fundraiser tonight at Chipotle before the meeting.
We did 19.
Yeah.
Were we doing 19 more?
Yes.
Okay, I was asleep. I was thinking about that.
That's okay. We were flipping and flipping. All right.
We took the vote, right, Donna?
Yes.
We took the vote for the 19.
You know what, though? Actually, we took it on 19, but it's two months. It should be 38, like we did with the financials.
Not the combined reports.
The combined reports.
Well, they were. I'm just saying, housekeeping-wise, if we did double on the combined reports for November and December.
So we should do double again. Why don't we just do it and then it's done?
Motion 38 motion.
Oh, it's 38 seconds.
All those in favor?
38.
38 times.
Trying to keep it consistent.
It's okay. All right.
Get real.
That's how I roll.
We're trying to roll here. The cap and gown color, Dr. Harrison is with us for this. Thank you. Since we had lots of questions.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to propose, starting that this spring with the class of 2020, all seniors attending the graduation ceremony wear the same color cap and gown. This change is a result of an act relative to gender identity, which amended several Massachusetts statutes to prevent discrimination on the basis of gender identity. In July 2012, this act relative to gender identity was amended to prohibit the discrimination on the basis of gender identity. Previously, it just included race, color, sex, religion, national origin, and sexual orientation. In July 2012, right after the law became into effect, the Department of Education published a document called the Guidance for Massachusetts Public Schools on Creating a Safe and Supportive School Environment. Within this document included ways for schools to establish policies and procedures, provide trainings, and implement and monitor practices to ensure that the obstacles to equal access to provide school programs are removed for all students, and this included transgender and gender non-conforming students. This included the elimination of gendered policies and practices such as gender-based garbs for graduation. The DESI, for example, recommends in their memo, switching to one color cap and gown. So that was July 2012, and then in September 2013, Rockland High School felt we met this requirement by allowing students the choice. Females could wear, choose the color they wanted. Males could choose the color they wanted. And typically, males wore blue, females wore white, but we allowed students the choice. In December 2016, there was a hot topic amongst principals in the South Shore. Many schools were quickly switching. Bridgewater, Rainham, Hall, Situitt, Milton, Quincy, Abington, South Shore Vocational, Carver, Silver Lake, Hanover, Hingham, and Noel all now have caps and gowns where students are just wearing one color. Colleges all have students wear one color. So this became a quick trend that schools were jumping on board. When I spoke to student leaders in September, or I'm sorry, in January of 2016, I felt we were still in compliance with the law, so I felt we could keep our practice the same, allowing females to choose and males to choose, and that we were in compliance with the statute. My concern stemmed from a school that was recently in the news. The American Civil Liberties Union of Massachusetts issued a statement towards this neighboring town. They published a memo, and they have the same policy as Rockland High School, allowing students to have the choice. And this high school, they felt, is not in compliance with the law, since despite offering the choice, male students chose blue and female students chose white-colored caps and gowns, and the selection of the student's color of cap and gown is rooted within the tradition of where gender determined the color of garb. Just to read a quote, the situation, in the memo from the American Civil Liberties Union, "The situation leaves transgender and non-binary students with the option only of choosing between two colors, each of which is associated with binary gender identity. It also leaves transgender and non-binary students at risk of harassment or bullying if they choose the color that the other students feel is not accurately associated with their apparent gender." The issue I see is that our current practice may or may not discriminate against transgender and non-binary students. There are significant concerns, I think, that are credible with our current practice. I've dealt with it. I think each year I've been principal with students who are transgender or gender non-conforming, and they've had this conflict of deciding. I began to really think about three guiding questions. First question was, does switching to one color cap and gown for all students create a more safe and supportive school culture that adhere to this law? For me, the answer was simple. It was yes. Is keeping, the second question was, is keeping Rockland tradition the only reason to keep two colors? And the answer was yes. And then the last question was, is this the time, and is this the class that should start and charter a new tradition? And I answered the question, yes. This is an outstanding senior class. They have high character, and I think this is the right time in talking to student leaders. So tonight, I'm recommending all seniors wear the same color cap and gown, starting with the class of 2020. With your approval, I would like to inform seniors during an assembly and allow them to vote on the design for the new color of cap and gown, which I distributed the three that they would vote on. The designs all have a navy blue base with a white stripe or some sort of white design on it. It is my recommendation. I do think not choosing to make the switch now does put us in some difficult position kind of moving forward, where we could be open to similar criticisms by the American Civil Liberties Union of Massachusetts.
Okay.
Couple questions.
What do you think, man?
That was where I was going.
I personally, I really like it. I was never a big fan of the white and the blue. I, like, two different ropes. I think together we'd look more unified. It would just, I think that it's the right time to do it, especially expressing all of Harrison's concerns. I feel the same way, and that while I may not fit into the categories that we're concerned of, I think that it's important that we do, like, think about them, and we do what we can to make them feel included and comfortable, because no one wants to feel uncomfortable like on their graduation day. So I'm for it.
Thank you for your insight.
I just have a question. This, what is it? Number three has this circle on it. That's a yoke? What is this? Can you tell me what that's little?
The third design there?
Yeah.
You're asking me what the yoke means?
Yeah.
I don't think it means anything, except that the front is white.
It's a direction thing, I think, is from the start.
I think it was cutting and pasting.
Okay, so it's not, you know?
It's not there.
There's no...
No, it's not there.
It's meant to point to the blue.
Okay.
Right.
Every year, is the class getting a choice of design? Or are we gonna stick with whatever this class goes? That's where we're rolling?
I'd like to stick with whatever this class decides. I think it gives them an incentive for being the first class, and I think if you change it every year, you lose, you lose a new tradition. That could be very meaningful.
Correct.
Yep, I agree.
I agree.
I don't know. I really like the first one with the small lines.
Right.
Or I like number three.
So number three looks very collegey to me.
That's what I thought as well.
I didn't like three.
Three looks, three looks extremely collegey to me, which I mean, I really like one.
The senior leaders took eight designs, I think, and narrowed them down to these three. So there were other designs they considered, too.
Right.
Now, would a private school fit into? Now, would a private school fit into under this?
It's a great question. I don't know.
You know? Just curious. I don't, I, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, we were keeping two colors, literally, because to quote something that's been said on this board 100 times, that's what we've always done.
Right.
So I don't see a reason to. Right. But what I'm saying is, times have changed. We don't need to worry about that.
Correct.
And I think what the.
I like, I like Maggie's point, just from a look.
The private schools, you know, it's not public funding.
Right.
And that's the whole, that's the whole case here. I mean, anything that's public funded is, you know.
Oh, no, I know. I just was curious if they are.
Am I right or wrong? It doesn't matter what we like. It matters what the kids like.
Exactly.
And I would make a motion to go along with Dr. Harrison's suggestion to put it up to the kids to decide which one they like and then follow through year after year.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. We have a motion in a second. Any more conversation?
I think it's great, so.
Good idea.
Okay. I agree.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Just a final thought. Thank you. With any change, I anticipate, my goal, I know we're on TV, but I do want the seniors to kind of hear from me directly on this process. So before it goes viral in the school committee, I'd like to tell them tomorrow, at the end of the day, with any change, there will be kids unhappy, I'm sure. But I promise you that it will fade. And at the end of the day, I promise the graduation ceremony will be very special and they'll look great. And they'll be navy, not royal blue.
I don't even know how many people care about the color of the cap and gown.
Right.
I think that the parents that have graduated already, that will want their children to sort of carry that tradition. I know my mother-in-law was in white. I was in white. You sort of anticipate that that's where you're going, you know?
What color was your blue?
What color was my blue?
No.
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 We were royal.
Believe it or not, I don't remember.
I was in white, Mike, so I don't know.
We had the royal blue. Our colors were not navy until, not that long ago, like red.
Well, we'll let Dr. Harrison go.
They were navy way back.
They were navy way back. And then they transitioned to royal.
But does it really matter? We're all.
To buck the people who are complaining about carrying a tradition.
Good night. Thanks for coming, Dr. Harrison.
They don't even have the same colors.
You were a couple of weeks before I was.
A couple of weeks, yeah.
Here we go.
I wish, a couple of weeks.
I feel like we've continued from last time we were here. Flip the page. Let's keep rolling.
All right.
Onto new business. Request for approval of the field trip for two, I should say, Quebec City, Canada. Ms. Dorr?
Hi. Hi. I'm back again, a couple of years later, looking for your approval for the same trip that we run, that we ran essentially this past school year. And I think you saw the proposal.
Right. We did.
We saw the results, too. They were good.
Oh, yes.
Right.
I even have some of the same kids that went that want to go again.
They want to go again.
Everybody to sign up.
See? That's a good sign, right? That they want to hand some back? So.
Did you have any questions on the itinerary?
Normally, with the out-of-state, you want to see your rep. I think you, I think you were planning on bringing your rep.
Yes. I can to the next. She was originally going to come tonight and then couldn't because of a family.
Okay. Is that a problem?
But I threw out February 10th as the date to her, and she said, no problem.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Can we talk about that? Vote on that then.
Yeah.
So we need a motion table?
Motion to table?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Mike, you're not voting?
No, I'm not in favor of tabling.
Okay.
It's the same trip they just did. Everything's the same. I don't.
Well, the school committee has a policy that you're going to see a rep if it's out of state. So that's, that's it, right?
Yep.
Unless you want to change the policy.
Nope. I don't. Or we, I shouldn't say I. It's not I at all. We'll see you in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Dorr. Okay. Request for approval of the field trip to Providence, Rhode Island.
Another great place to go.
It's Mrs. House?
No, Ms. Bond. Your, your kids are going to Providence, right?
It's, um, yeah, I can't remember. Is it?
The Zoo.
Roger Williams.
Roger Williams Zoo.
Right. It's grade five.
Grade five, Roger Williams.
Okay. So we don't actually need her to come up. This is a regular field trip.
Yeah.
Right. But it's out of state.
Oh, it's out of state.
What's your recommendation, Doc?
My motion, my recommendation is to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Request for approval of the fundraisers. So we have Esten School Pack has a cookie dough sales for February and March.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Now, back to you, Dr. Cromer, with the preliminary FY21 budget presentation.
Now, this is a preliminary budget, a first pass. So things are still being worked on. I'm going to walk you through the budget, give you a little background so you understand where the district is, what, who our students are today versus last week or versus a year ago. I'll present the preliminary budget, including salaries, new positions, annual expenses, special education, the final FY21 appropriation. Just to give a little background, one of the things that we've been working at in central office is making the budget as transparent as possible and also making the budget as school-based as possible. So DESI's chart of accounts is, DESI stands for the Department of Education. It's our Department of Education. And the chart of accounts is a system that they use with schools so that we can communicate back and forth about financial matters. And Munis is the software that we use, the payroll software that we use with the town so that we can pay all of our employees. So a few of the things that we have done to restructure our budgeting process, our financial process, is we have targeted and budgeted specific revolving accounts to specific salary and expense line items. We have audited and reallocated special education and general education salaries. We have broken out recurring personnel and one-time salary costs, for example, separating coaches and stipends from regular salary items. We have audited and reallocated expenses. And we have moved closer to a building-based budget format. And most importantly, all of this is now in line with DESI's chart of accounts. And again, they recently made some changes with chart of accounts, so we had to make some, do some changing around with alignment and Munis. The Act, 2019 Act Relative to Educational Opportunity, it's recently been in the news. The governor signed it just in January. And part of that legislation includes a pretty good chunk of funding, an additional $1.6 million to the town of Rockland this year. But along with that money comes some requirements, and we have to submit a three-year plan. And that three-year plan needs to, quote, to describe the relationship between the allocation of funds and the educational needs of English learners and low-income students, and a description of the evidence-based programs, supports, and interventions that the school district will implement to address persistent disparities in achievement among student subgroups. So this act was really aimed at English language learners and the gaps that exist there, students with high needs, whether they be financial, or they have students with IEPs. So our response to, to this act and to our particular needs are, we're moving to a one-to-one Chromebook next year. It will be one-to-one Chromebooks K to 12 next year. And the plan is to have one in the hands of every fifth grader through senior, a one-to-one program, and then to have enough Chromebooks to be one-to-one at the elementary as well. We feel this addresses some economic disparities that may exist in the homes of our, of our students. But we feel very, we're very excited about the one-to-one initiative. Additional technology support person to help with the additional number of, of computers. Currently, we have two people working in that department, so this would expand that department to include a third. English language learner and special education support personnel. This may take the form of special education teachers, or it may take the form of paraprofessionals, or even ABA specialists and things like that. New middle school and elementary math curriculum. We've had a math committee working together for the past year and a half under the direction of Colleen Forlizzi. So we have narrowed this down to new middle school and elementary math curriculum, and that's part of our response, because math, the gaps in math are significant. Targeted curriculum support personnel and programs. This could take the form of lead teachers. It could take the form of coaches. We're still working out what the best model is for the Rockland Public Schools. And some strategic professional development. So perhaps providing our teachers with training for working with students whose primary language is not English, or providing teachers with, with professional development in how to implement the new math curriculum. Just so that you can get an idea of where our current, who our current population is, throughout 19 to 20, our ELL population continued to grow. And currently, there are 184 active ELL students in the Rockland Public Schools. When I started here eight years ago, there were about 20 district-wide. So it's really exploded. And that number is really at 220 if you include former English learners, so students who have tested out of the EL track. Testing data shows that our ELL students are scoring significantly lower than their non-ELL classmates. And again, just trying to explain why we're making the choices that we're making. Just to give you an idea, this is Memorial Park. There are 292 students in Memorial Park. Currently, 46 of them are English language learners. That's up to 16%. So not trying to scare anyone, but just, we do have a lot of English language learners in the district now, and that presents real challenges to teachers in the classroom, and we need to support them with materials and personnel. I'd also like to point out that it's not just English language learners, but it's our high-needs population that has grown and continues to grow over, over time. So you can see from this chart, and again, I know that these, these slides come and go pretty quickly, but this is sort of a public record, and this, this meeting is being recorded, and people can come back, obviously, and look at these slides. So if I go through something too quickly and anyone would like to talk more about it, and this is for those of you out in TV land, you feel, please feel free to call the office. I'm happy to speak with anyone about these issues. Finally, the high school especially has received, has experienced significant increase in the percentage of high-needs students. So if you're considered high-needs by the state, you're either low-income, an English language learner, a former English language learner, or you have an IEP. So currently, at Rockland High School, 39.6% are considered high-needs, and district-wide, 45.3% are considered high-needs. And just again, to, to point out, this change in Rockland really is, it's really a Rockland, it's, it's happening statewide, the change and the influx of people from other countries. But in the state, growth in high-needs was 5.3% over the past two years, whereas Rockland High School's growth percentage of high-needs students grew by 35.1% and district-wide by almost 13%. So our population is changing. And I know you've heard this from me before, because I present this pretty much every time we talk about money. I want to explain why we're steering the way we're steering. So now, to get to the, to the budget numbers, just going to flip ahead here. So our town meeting budget number, we are up essentially $1.6 million from the town from the previous year. I'd like to thank the town. So far, our level of cooperation has been unprecedented, working with Doug Lapp and working with Biz. It's been a pleasure so far and looking forward to completing the budget circle with them and having a great relationship with them for years to come, because they've been truly professional and transparent with us, and we appreciate that. So our, I will be presenting the budget in four categories. This is the town meeting line. This is the grants line. This is circuit breaker and prepay line, and this is revolving. So this is, when all of our bills come in, they're paid from one of these four categories. So as I go through the budget, you'll notice there'll be, sometimes when there'll be nothing under grants, and that's because it's being paid for totally out of our town meeting allocation. But that's how we're, how I'm showing you the budget, paid for out of these four different categories. Our salaries, important thing to understand about the 1.6 million is that $900,000, really $905,000, is the cost simply to roll our staff over from one year to the next. So when we, when we, to honor our contractual commitments, 2% raise, actually, it's a 1.9% raise this year. It was 2 to 1.9. So to pay all of our bills, just, just to pay salaries, was about $900,000. I'm showing salary one and salary two. Salary two is things like coaches stipends, and salaries one is all of our teacher pay and things like that. So again, this is, this is the result of us trying to make our budget more transparent and clear so we can understand how we're spending our money. So our total salaries request for FY21 is $24,96,984. Our annual expenses have stayed relatively steady. You can see the FY20 budget versus the FY21 budget. It's stayed relatively consistent. I will say, there has been some savings along the lines of transportation. Where are we? We've, we've managed to save some money in-house by, with our foster care and our homeless students by coming up with creative ways to transport them other than very, very expensive transportation services. So we're doing them with our own vans. And that, shout out to Jane Hackett and to Colleen Forlizzi and Linda Miniglia's office for their work on that. But we are using some of that savings to help prepay for some of the curriculum that I talked about before. So our hope this year is to prepay for the elementary math and the middle school math curriculum. And part of that will be from some of the savings that we've accrued just by being more efficient in-house. Special education, sped transportation, again, another area where we've been able to trim the budget a bit. Our total request for transportation for FY21 is $3277,670.58. Our plan is, at this time, is to add some positions so that we're in compliance, the four, and also to be in compliance with the new law that just passed. But our four English language paras, we, we're hiring one this year. Our plan is to have one English language para, so that's one Portuguese-speaking paraprofessional in each of our five buildings. We currently have an English language learner teacher, one in each of our five buildings. So this would give them a paraprofessional to have, to work alongside a Portuguese-speaking paraprofessional to help them with their work. We're also looking at adding an additional technology technician, as I mentioned before. And then these remaining, the remaining three positions, remaining three categories, we're still working on, senior admin. We just received this number a handful of days ago. So we've been finalizing our budget. But again, of that, with the increase, we're, we're basically left with $469,000 to fill our compliance needs and fill our needs with English language learners, low income, and our, our overall challenges. Our total budget request for FY21 is right here. Our total budget request for FY '21 is right here, it's $30,761,600, I'm sorry, $30,761,694.58. And if you're not asleep, I would be willing to take a question.
I don't think I have any questions, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work. I know that it has been a year of plugging numbers in, getting balanced, and working with the town hall.
Well, it's been great having Jane with us.
Correct.
Jane Hackett has been a great addition and is really helping us move our budget process forward.
I feel very happy with what the state has come up with as far as financial plans, particularly for the town of Rockland. We're experiencing, this is extremely good news, as good a news as I remember being a member of this committee. I think it's phenomenal for the town of Rockland, when you, when you think of what this town has done for our kids, in 10 years, we'll have all brand-new schools, not, nothing older than 10 years old. And have a budget that is as good as I recall seeing it, filling positions that have lacked being filled for a long time, it's bringing things, the business back to the way it should be. I'm extremely pleased, I realize that this is only a preliminary budget, but as we get through this and eventually present it to the finance committee and the selectmen and the, eventually the townspeople, I'm just overjoyed for this, I think it's wonderful. I compliment not only you, because I know you don't do any work.
Absolutely.
It's the people behind you, the two assistant superintendents and everyone else involved in this process, because it's a huge process.
It sure is.
It's a huge process, it's been a huge undertaking, and we are blessed.
And we again appreciate the town and their cooperation.
Yeah, that was, I was gonna ask that, the cooperation from them. But the other thing is, what do you see for ELL students coming in here? It seems like we're increasing and increasing.
Yeah, yeah, we are, I suspect it's gonna, I suspect it's gonna level off. I think there's only so much housing, and I think there's only so much housing, there's not anything new being built at this time, so I see it leveling off. The same, same thing is happening in our neighbors, with our neighbors, it's happening in Weymouth, it's happening in Abington.
It's my understanding too, that you are, not you personally, but this is being checked
on on a regular basis, so that we know that the people that are flourishing under our education system live here.
Yes.
And, yeah, that's important, and I know that, you know, that's a concern of some communities, but I know that you people work hard at that, so that's important.
We do, we work with the police department on that very closely.
Good.
Any other questions or comments?
Just as I'm looking at the ELL enrollment by school, I know we have three years, give or take, till we have a new school, and all the elementaries are housed in one area, but I know you and I have discussed this multiple times all year long, you can't have a school that has 50 percent more than the other two elementary schools.
Why?
Well, you tell me.
No, tell me why you can't have it.
Because then you have 46 kids in one school.
Yeah.
You got 30 in another.
Yeah.
You have 31 in another.
Yeah, I don't see 50 percent, number one, but number two, what's wrong with, what's wrong with the ELL kids being?
Dick, do the math.
I'm doing the math.
Thirty, half of that is fifteen.
That's not what I'm asking.
So 50 percent more.
So why not?
Why not? Because then you get an overloaded classroom with it.
What do you mean you get an overloaded classroom?
You get a classroom that might have-
Classrooms are all basically the same sizes.
Not if there's five ELL kids in that one class.
What are you trying to say?
What I'm trying to say is distribute it a little bit better amongst the three schools.
So one of the things we have done, Mike, is we've already hired that ELL para for Memorial Park, because their numbers have grown quicker than the other elementaries. So that EL was just hired last week, so that para will be in the rotation starting next week. I've talked to other towns, our EL numbers are not, they're scary to us because they're new, but they're not, they're not out of whack. In fact, when you, if you talk to Mr. Mills, he'll tell you about his schools and how high the populations are.
That's a city.
Yeah.
Apples to oranges on that, I'm just saying, you got one, you know.
It's where they live, though.
Yeah.
That's where they live, so that's why they go into three elementary schools, this is the whole point of-
But it might be worth looking into distributing it a little bit better, is what I'm saying.
Well, it's gonna be handled pretty well by what we've just seen in the budget presentation too, with additional personnel.
Those numbers aren't that outrageous.
It doesn't really mean to be seen, it's been, whatever.
Yeah, and you, I mean, you have staff that, you get staff doing it.
We do, we do. I think, I think Mr. Graffalo's point is valid, if you're a classroom teacher, and you're, you have 25 students and five of them don't speak English, it creates a challenge. The English language learner students are spread out among the classrooms, but they also have to be kept in small groups at least, so that we can schedule their interventions. But I think the addition of the paraprofessional is gonna provide a lot of support and a lot of help, it's an extra set of hands, and it's a Portuguese-speaking set of hands, which will be very helpful to the English language learner teacher.
And also, you have students in those classes that speak English and Portuguese, and they help out too with some of that.
Right, right.
With some of that learning. And I know I have students that do that, we have students that come in from, you know, that have a ELL background, and they need that, and they don't speak a word of English, and we'll sit, you know, some other students with them, and they'll work with them on that, so.
Right.
I think too, putting them sort of together helps them themselves, I mean, they're here, they can't speak English, they're in a room with bunch of children that can't speak English, you know?
I had a, had a phone meeting last week with an assistant superintendent from a neighboring town who has experienced this ahead of us, and talked through with her, you know, her ideas of programming and how to best support these students at the different ages, and I left that conversation feeling much better about what we're doing. I know, I feel very confident that we have a solid structure in place, and that by having an English language learner teacher in each of the five buildings, that's a great start, that's more than a lot of our neighbors have, but by adding that EL paraprofessional, we'll really be able to dial in how much we're doing with pullouts and push-ins, and you're just really be able to double our services in Memorial Park, so I'm hoping that that will provide some relief to that school.
Yeah, and you do a lot of pullouts, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
You have to, I mean, you do.
You do.
Yeah, and then you get the one-on-ones, the two-on-ones, and stuff like that.
And then the teachers, every teacher, remember, every classroom teacher, in order to recertify their certification, needs to take a 45-hour class in an SEI endorsement in how to, how to work with students whose language, primary language is not English. So our teachers are not completely left without training. I mean, that said, it's a real challenge, it's a challenge every day, I want to see our teachers get what they need to be successful, I want to see our kids get what they need to be successful, so.
Plus, as a teacher, you sit in that room with them, and you listen to her, you, after a while, you get to understand what they're saying.
Right.
After, you know, you do, I mean, you know what they're talking about.
Well, you deal with it every day, so you know.
All the time, we have, probably 70 percent of our students are ELLs.
Better than I.
But I do think that the teachers are doing an amazing job with all of these students, our non-ELL students, and are sort of keeping them all rolling, and making sure no one falls behind, and I think that's something to be said as well.
Do you, I mean, I mean, as report cuts, as report cuts come out, you see any of them, you know, is there a line of failures going through there, or a line?
What we, what we saw last year, Tom, what really popped was at the high school.
Yeah.
Again, these are students who may have been in the country for a year or two, they get a pass on the ELA exam for a year, but then they have to take the exam the following year. I think it's a real challenge, so getting that paraprofessional in place at the high school as quickly as possible would be helpful too, with MCAS. But we saw, you, when you look at the MCAS data for your building or for the district, you can, you really know, you know exactly where the scores are coming from, who the kids are, that's why we give the tests, right, so we know where they are, and we can help them. But a lot of the challenges are with the EL students and the gaps.
No doubt about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're highly intelligent, it's, you know, it's, and I have to say that as a group, as a whole, I think we're incredibly fortunate to have our community, I think our community is enriched with Portuguese-speaking students that have joined our, our school district, so.
And I find-
I think we're a better district for that.
I find, a lot of times, when they come into this opportunity, they're taking advantage of that opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, they want to learn, where they probably haven't had that, that learning, that rigorous, you know, learning.
And we're seeing more parent participation from our English language learner families too. I think for a while, there was trepidation about coming out to events and things like that, and we've worked very hard to communicate with them and to invite them, and our last English language learner meetings were much better attended, so, and parent-teacher conferences are attending, and so.
Good.
Great.
So this is just preliminary, I'll be back with a, with a more final budget, and we'll have lots of conversations between now and then.
Yeah.
Okay?
Just another quick question, you might have answered, MCAS alt, what's the percentage of MCAS alt do you have?
Oh, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay, just do something off the top of your head.
I can, I will find out for you, though.
Yeah, that'd be fine, thanks.
I'd probably say 1 percent if I had to guess.
Oh, that's something.
That would, in fact, I don't believe you're allowed to have more than 1 percent.
Okay.
I think you're, you can't have more than 1 percent of MCAS alts, so, I believe that's the rule for Desi. Okay?
Okay. Anything else, guys?
Okay.
Thanks, Dr. Cron.
Thank you.
Okay, on to personnel information for December and January. He's still playing with the, do you have anything to add to that, Dr. Cron? No. I wanted to say that Mrs. Cook and, sorry, Mrs. Cook and Mrs. Gretan are retiring from the middle school, and I know both of my children had them, and I think that they were wonderful, they are some of Rockland's finest, so when you finish your year, we wish you enjoyment in your retirement.
Yes.
Yes.
They're all shifting around, oh yes, she is, I didn't think she was on here. All right, so, some of Rockland's finest are going on to brighter days with less students. We will go on to public service announcements, we'll start with you, Ms. Keir.
So we have just finished mid-years last week, and we are on to term three, you see a lot of seniors smiling faces. I wanted to talk about the Rockland app that they introduced a couple weeks ago, I am personally a really big fan of it. The main reason how like, how I use it is I go on the events section, and I always look at what's going on, because so busy, so it helps that I make sure that I'm not forgetting anything, or if there's something that I want to go to, I know what time it is, so I really love that. Caps and gowns, gowns were ordered, well, not ordered, but seniors got to purchase their gowns last week, which was also exciting, and I'm very interested to see how the senior class reacts tomorrow when they're told all this big news, and to see which one that we end up with, I think all of them will be great, and it, the, we are very lucky, but also sad at the same time, because Ms. Ellis's last day is on Friday. Ms. Ellis is Mr. Harrison's secretary and go-to gal, she has done so much for the high school, and we're gonna miss her and her wonderful morning announcements.
How is the system gonna function without Mrs. Woodward and Mrs. Ellis? That's what I want to know.
Lots of change happening, lots of change, right? The middle school just changed over, so I guess it's the high school's turn.
Let us know about the caps and gowns, will you?
I will.
Yes, put it out there on the, on the-
On their app.
Yeah, right, right.
I'm sure we can get that loaded on the app.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sure. Since it's you next.
Well, I was looking at the app, I, one of the things that popped up on my phone all the time is the bulldog, and some of my students are, who's that? I said, that's the school, yeah, that's the school, I graduated from.
You don't tell them that's the best school?
Of course. I'm the best teacher there. Tell them that all the time, they don't believe that, yeah. Yeah, that's, I mean, I look at the, you know, the day out that's out there, and that's, I think that's really nice out there, you know, I think people are using, I see a lot of the information on it, you know.
Good.
I've been using it as well.
Yeah, I do too.
We hit 1,000 downloads Friday, so I'm expecting at least another 1,000.
Okay.
We should have at least 2,000 downloads, I think.
Yeah, and we get, and we get capacity for that, right?
Yeah.
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 Good, good, I really enjoy, I really enjoy using that app, thank you for getting it done.
Mr. Phelps?
Nothing but sports, you know, you know, the, whatever, we're having a great winter season, the girls' basketball, phenomenal, we had 1,000-point getter the other night, a young lady, what's her name?
Caroline Eli.
Yes.
Oh, it was Caroline.
Miss Rockland.
Yeah, that's right.
Also stud volleyball player.
And we've got basketball boys, they're phenomenal, they're, they're not big, but I'll tell you, there's a couple of them, I've never seen anyone so quick in my life, the way they, they can move that ball from one end of the court to the other. Hockey is doing okay, it's not like it was last year, but you have peaks and valleys with hockey especially, you lose a goalie, or you lose a high scorer, and it affects the whole thing for a while. But all in all, I, I'm thrilled with what's happening, and I'm thrilled with the sportsmanship there, that I know of no problems with any of these teams, with any officials, with any of that, it's all going well. The kids in the stands, phenomenal, you don't see that in other towns, when you get the roller coaster going and everything, it's awesome, so I just, get out to a game if you can, I tell the six people that are watching.
Mr. Graffalo?
I mean, I think Dick said it all about the winter season, it is funny to watch both basketball teams continue to make tournament, it's a ridiculous number now, for both the girls' and the boys' basketball, it's like-
Over 50, 50 out of 50-something years, they make tournaments.
It's, you don't see that everywhere, and, you know, it's a testament to the coaching staff, it's a testament to the kids playing, and like you said, there's no like, hey superstar, look at me on the court, and yet, they just keep winning, keep playing, and they're having fun doing it, so, I think that's great to see. Hockey, like you said, it's peaks and valleys, they have a lot of, they have like, five eighth graders on that team, because they're so young. It's, it's, it's good for the eighth graders, right, because by the time those kids have two, three years in, they're used to it, but it's crazy to see how one year, you know, two years in a row, they, they had a lot of kids that were, you know, they didn't need the eighth graders, now they need them, it's just peaks and valley of that sport, you know?
The eighth graders will be 10th graders and 11th graders.
Yep, and then they're gonna be, you know, it's, exactly.
Counting down the days.
I know, is senioritis kicking yet?
No, not yet.
How many days?
Uh, 70.
You're not counting.
They are counting, it was 80 last time.
So, last time, we had some decisions to make? Have we made them yet?
Uh, yeah.
No pressure, right here on camera.
No, just curious, still don't know.
Um, I've gotten accepted into a bunch of really nice schools, so I'm kind of just waiting to see financial aid, and also, the acceptance student stage are coming up in February, so.
Get a good last tour in to see, yeah.
Yeah, hoping to figure something out.
You will.
Hey, you know, I didn't finish where I started, so, it's fine.
Just to go back to that, you know, basketball, yeah, okay.
I thought you meant-
I know, I know, I know, I know, basketball.
I'm like, we're losing control again.
No, no, just going back to basketball, I mean, I moved here from Boston, and when I grew up in Boston, football was the sport down there, and I got here, I couldn't get over this phenomenon with the basketball, yeah, I mean, it continues and continues and continues, and I know you're going, coming here to the school and watching and making the tech attorneys back then, and so, and the crowds, you couldn't get into this building, into the old building.
It goes back to Ace Scott McKinley.
Yeah, it does, I can hear that, he's the one that brought it, he was the coach then.
But I think, it's cool when you go, that you see generations of people, right, all dogs, all going, right? I think that's what's cool.
Yeah, it's just phenomenal, anyway, I'll shut up. I'm good.
Everyone good? I just have that, I had the pleasure of joining Memorial Park to go to the selectment meeting last week, I actually just stood there and watched, they did all the work, but they did an impressive job. Some of the policemen got their sergeants first, so the students sat through that, which I thought was a cool thing, but the house was packed, it was packed in the hallways, the parking lot and everything, and our MP students were polite, and they were well-behaved, and they represented our schools well, and I think that that's exciting for us here, but also for their families and their teachers, that that's who they're bringing up, good little kids, so congrats to them on that, for kindness for MP, and that's all I had. Anything else?
Oh, well, I'd be remiss-
I shouldn't have passed it back.
No, I'd be remiss in saying that Isabel was sad to miss that meeting, because she is a student leader in the fourth grade.
I wondered that.
We were away, and she was actually supposed to do this, but we were away.
Do you want to come up and say hi quick?
Do you want to?
And then we'll close.
Want to say anything about Kindness Day?
She should turn around.
Turn around, look at the camera.
Right, the camera with the light on is on us, sweetie.
Tomorrow, the kindness leaders are going to the radio station to get recorded for a kindness song we wrote about Kindness Day, to like, kind of inform everyone about like, how it's gonna work and all that.
Very cool, all right.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, and with that?
Motion for a adjutant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.